I would like to call the July County Commissioner regular session meeting to order. If would, I'd like to ask Mr. Keith to do the prayer and...
Yes. Before we come to today, just thank you for giving us a good day, dear Lord. Thank you for our help you blessed us with, our country you blessed us with, dear Lord. Just ask you to be with us as going to this meeting, guide our thoughts and our mind to be in tune with yours, dear Lord. Guide our actions, be pleasing to you, give us some upright, amen.
Amen.
I plead allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We need to get approval of the agenda.
I approve.
Second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, everybody looked at the minutes? We need to get a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Ah, second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Financial reports? Need a motion to approve if everything looks in order?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have one appearance, is that person here?
I don't see Mr. Sam here.
All right, we'll move on. You want to go into executive session first, or you want to save that for last?
Let's just do it last.
Do it last?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Old business, the E nine one one software contract.
So, Whitney, um, you know, we all voted to kind of just let Whitney kind of talk to that company and see before we pay, could we, could we go ahead and sign the contract versus wait or we would have to pay it? I know we did talk to them, so what did they do?
I did talk to them and what, um, Jamie's who I've been dealing with there at PTS, he said normally they ask for the money upfront, but he said if we agreed to go ahead and sign the contract, he could talk to Doug and probably work something out where we pay partial upfront and then the rest wants to do it. And he said the reason they're doing that is right now there's a list of people who are in front of us. So if we wait till December to sign, we probably will not get the new software till the middle of next year versus if we go ahead with and get on the list, we could have it probably by November end and us trying to how to use it.
Last place, whatever y'all decide, if y'all want to go ahead and do it now and then make a motion, it'll just get the contract signed.
So you want a motion to let Whitney enter into the contract? Need a motion for...
Do EMSK, either...
Whitney to enter to a agreement with the new E nine one one?
I'll make a motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, P twenty five radio system.
So, um, I included in your package, it's kind of a lengthy read, but all of them come down and their engineers come down and met me and all. Um, we're on, we're on go to go ahead and get it done. We've got the financing in place, we've got the regional commission told me the money's there ready to go. So they're going to come down, I guess it's once a month, we're going to have a meeting with, with their tech team. Uh, the next meeting, we're going to get all the department heads in it, we're going to make sure we count and get the exact radios that we need because if, once we purchase them, we're not, we're not going to be buying them anymore. So, um, just wanted to update y'all, kind of keep y'all updated on the, on the meetings. So I, I put it in there, you'll see everything that we're getting in this package there. There's no, there's no, there's no action.
Any questions on that? All right, we'll move to new business, the intergovernmental agreement for the P twenty five radio system.
So this is the, uh, intergovernmental agreement that we've brought up. The attorney actually looked at it first and then it went to the city and the city kind of made some changes. Um, some, some little small wording changes that I've, I've actually sent back to the county attorney now. It's really not going to affect anything, but this basically just states that, um, they own the tower, we own the equipment, though we give them the right to use it, they give us the right to use it. Uh, we can cancel, either party can cancel within like a sixty to ninety day notice. It, it's pretty much the standard. Um, it just basically states in there that i- if they lose any of the radios, they're on their own, they're going to, they're going to have to reimburse us for purchasing the radios because once we spend that money, it's gone, we won't have it again. So, um, I'll kind of, if, if, that's just for your, your, your review because it's going to be, when the attorney gets back to me, I hope he'll get back to me today, but he didn't. So, um, that'll probably be on the August meeting to get, to get approved.
All right, any more questions on that? The beer and wine license renewal.
So you know, June, we do the renewals, we had two renewals that come up, um, they've done their fingerprints and, um, their state applications and so everything's pretty much taken care of. It's just, um, I have the sheriff, he's already, he's already signed off on it, so I just need a motion to let the chairman sign off. If you didn't find any, there wasn't nothing.
So we need a motion to approve two beer and wine licenses.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Maintenance of non-county roads.
Um, so, so Mr. Keith had called me, he had a complaint, not a complaint, he had a request from one of his constituents about a road out there on Nobles. It's, it's basically a road that doesn't have a name. And I think the road department, once or twice, they've, over the, throughout the years, they've kind of went through it and just blamed it and all that. Well, they'd asked again about doing it, so I, I checked with ACCG and basically they said do not touch any, anything that's not county owned because that's violation of the, the constitutional gratuity clause. Meaning we're going on private property to maybe do something for somebody, so what kind of kickback are we getting? So he said that's a very bad area and we don't go. But now if, if for some reason somebody had a road, they wanted to deed it to the county, we could accept it as a deed and it'd be considered county property, then, then we could be able to do it. But as, as right now, we cannot take any, um, road department equipment on something that's not county owned.
Did you relay that to the...
Yeah, I did, I have.
Did they want to think about it or do anything?
Yeah, well, there's, uh, two or three other, probably like two more property owners that will have to get together on it. So I don't know if it's going to ever happen or not, but at least we got a procedure to go about that in the future.
Right, right.
There is some, there is some different lanes that we're going to have to talk about eventually because I know there's some up in your district that, that we kind of, or we did maintain, but we're going to have to stop maintaining.
Right.
And we're working on making sure that we got a accurate, updated list with the state. We, you know, Doug talked about that today with, you know, what is our legal roads and what are not considered legal roads? And we're making sure that our stuff and the state's, you know, all jive together. We've been working on that last, well, end of last weekend, we were still working on a little bit today, but we're going to make sure that we got all our roads accounted for and, you know, what roads are not roads and what roads are legal county roads. So we'll have a really accurate list when we get through because Doug needs a copy of a good, accurate list. The state changed a little bit of stuff and the way they measure roads and some of our stuff changed a little bit. We fought it a little bit right then, but it was kind of, it was a rough time, but now they more, okay, we'll get it all straightened out and get, you know, make sure we got everything like it's supposed to be. So we'll have that in just a, you know, a few days. We'll, we'll be working with the state to make sure all our stuff is, is right.
All right, any more questions on that? The tax assessor service contract renewal.
Uh, this is a annual renewal that they have to have, um, you just need to make a motion to go ahead and sign it.
So we need a motion to renew tax assessor service contract?
Make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the spending resolution for two thousand twenty five?
So you know, we are waiting on the numbers to come in, so every year we have to do a spending resolution. So you just basically need to adopt this resolution that states that we're still functioning on the last F Y S budget.
We need to read it out?
You do need to read it.
Spending resolution twenty five dash zero seven zero nine point zero. Whereas the Miller County Board of Commissioners has not formally adopted a budget for the year beginning July the first, two thousand twenty five and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty six. And whereas the Miller County Board of Commission has studied and revised a proposed budget and is in the process of budget procedures and hearings, and now therefore be it resolved that the Miller County Board of Commissioners, operating under the FY twenty four twenty five budget until time as the FY twenty five twenty six operated budget is adopted. Be it further resolved that the resolution is to be made part of the minutes of the regular session minutes of July the fourteenth, two thousand twenty five, so be it resolved this fourteenth day of July the twenty twenty fifth. So need a motion to adopt that.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Want to talk about that EDL?
Yeah, basically this is just for y'all's review. Um, it is a MOU from a solar company that we have been talking to. Um, I've sent it to the county attorney, just waiting for his response. But if you go it, I know Mr. Keith kind of looked through it and they actually sent me some more, um, files from my county today that's been dealing with them. So we just kind of need to review them, but just kind of look that over. Um, there's really no timeline to get it back, just going to wait for the county attorney and then we'll, we'll move forward with that. It, it does list a lot of their, how they want to talk about tax abatement and stuff. And then like I say, that, that's going to take a while because y'all need to get with the development authority and then the tax assessor's board, so we all, there's, there's a lot of steps we need to go through that. Move that around. So there's no action.
Any questions on that? All right, the ACCG safety discount form.
This is an annual form that needs to be signed by the chairman. It just lists Austin as the safety coordinator. And to be able to qualify for the safety discount, we just have to have it signed.
So I need a motion to...
To approve the...
To approve, Austin is the safety...
Safety coordinator and the, and, and the safety discount board.
Need a motion for all of that.
Oh, my gosh.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Inspire Building Roof Quotes.
Um, so you know, Inspire's been kicked out of their place, we're just been asked to, to leave their, uh, office. They've been talking to us about the old Dr. Mintz Pink building. Um, me and Mark has looked it over and I turned it over to him to get some quotes for, uh, the roof. And there's the three, the three different roofers that he's got down there, I got it listed in, uh, the prices and it looks like Bob's Roofing Company with, uh, was the lowest with fifteen thousand eight hundred forty five and then all the way up to seventeen thousand seven hundred seventy five. And that's for a twenty six gauge metal. And included in there is the business license from the city, the insurance, everything that's required.
You want a motion to, are you just, that's just for us to look at?
Uh, well, we need to go ahead and get it done because Inspire's kind of asking me every day if we get something done on it, so... I mean, if y'all want to go ahead and make a motion or, you know, like I could go up to twenty five thousand if I needed to.
No, 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 that, we don't need to go with that.
Obviously, I can approve it, but if you want to go ahead and do it now, that's fine.
Is anybody, is anybody, uh... Y'all familiar with Bob Roofing Company?
Yeah, it's, it's Renee Garcia that's going to be doing it.
Oh, okay. So we need a motion to...
To approve the bid for fifteen thousand eight hundred forty five.
All right, so I need a motion to approve the fifteen thousand eight hundred forty five dollar bid. This is the same figure on there, but...
Now, there's two different ones that are, one, one is a shingle on that and then it says, it should tell you...
Yeah, it's the metal.
Yeah, it says metal shingles, yeah.
I want to, I want to, I want to read through it.
And I did pass along to Inspire that, you know, due to what we're going to have to do with the building, that we would be coming up with the figure for them at least.
Yeah, they are the same, they are twenty six gauge, twenty...
I guess all the same metal.
All the same, everything's... All the same, everything's apples and apples, I think. Do we get a motion? To approve the?
Have we got a motion yet, or we're still waiting on that?
We still waiting on it.
Still waiting. I make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? When will they start on that?
Uh, I'll get with Mark and let him.
Okay.
He's handling all that.
All right, widening the roof for surfacing of the road?
So, the RFP closed out Friday, and the only, um, the only bid or RFP that we got in was from Oxford. Uh, they come in, I think we had one point two million, they come in at one point one eight three million. So, we've got about twenty-six thousand under our budget, and Andy had talked about taking that money and going from Phillipsburg side of Cooktown all the way to Kimball Road and put the reflective markers and all on there. So, we'll have money to do that.
Yeah, we, you know, we went for paving, but we gonna make it a little past Kimball. We got a little extra that would really enhance that road to go back and put the raised pavement markers on it. It helps the elderly drive at night, you know, helps everybody, but the elderly mostly. So, you know, that twenty-six thousand, way more than cover it, then we just add the rest into some paving, but I'd like to see it, if y'all, you know, if that's what y'all wanted to do, I could work that in there. Because we gonna, you know, we gonna, all we likes, a little bit in Baker County, you know, about a mile and something in Baker County. We get that, we can, you know, we can fix that when we pave, but there will.
You said in Baker County?
All the way.
The little section going into Baker County. We can't pay Baker County's road as well, but. And we limb cut that section too, you know, we gotta cut back.
I wish they'd went just a little bit further right there. I know you can't go another county, but it was just a little bit in the other county right there.
Well, he's still out there, so we, we need to trim a bush or two.
Man, it wasn't much. It wasn't much.
He, he's been doing pretty good on the paved roads, and he's skipping the spots where they're dangerous, you know, when he's not in a straightaway. And then we've been getting the sign guy to go back with him, you know, to help him hit the curves and things good. We've been working on a good many paved roads here lately, so, and we gonna get Phillipsburg, but he'll just have to have some, we really have to have some help to do it, because it's hilly and curved.
All right.
So, we need a motion to then approve them.
Motion to approve.
I make a motion?
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, E nine one one recorder quote?
That is for our, it's our Eventiary Recorder. What it does is it records all the phone calls and radio traffic that comes into nine one one. Um, when they put it in last year, it was under a contract with them for one year then. It's now coming up for renewal, and those are the three prices that they've given us for the renewal. The first one is, um, the parts twenty-four seven onsite and remote support, software updates, and twenty-four seven monitoring. And then the second one, the only difference between that, the second, third, and the first one, is that they don't offer the twenty-four seven remote support. So, something tears up in the middle of the night, they're not gonna come fix it, we have to wait till eight o'clock the next morning.
So, you, you wanna do the first one, correct?
I would prefer to do the first one, just so we don't have to worry, if anything happens in the middle of the night, like bad weather or something, somebody will come on and fix it, so that we don't lose any communication that we may need later on for open records.
We got plenty of money?
She has that in that special account.
Got money, okay. Need a motion?
Yeah.
Need a motion to approve Whitney's recorder contract?
I make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Resolution approving write-off of property taxes older than seven years?
This is for the tax commissioner, she submitted it to me to give to y'all, um, I'll let her talk about it.
So, with our new, um, property software, um, particular bill may come up, and then they show back taxes. So, then, we look at all years, and I'll have on there, um, which ones aren't checked, and I'll go to look, and it could be the year nineteen ninety-seven. So, how we figure out, um, who's been paying, we pull the tax digest for that particular year and go search that bill, and it tells what date it was signed off on being paid, it just was not posted properly. It's confusing to us, and it's confusing to the taxpayer, because it looks like they haven't paid taxes when they actually probably have. So, I'm requesting that we, requesting that we have a resolution, uh, signed off on this to exclude any back taxes, seven years and later. Now, these were already the ones that were paid, but there are some that are still outstanding. This, this is state law, we're supposed to write them off.
What's the board's pleasure?
If I understand you correctly, the state law says if it's seven years or longer, that you automatically supposed to write that out, please? It's a state law, that's what it's got, didn't it?
You wanna be notified when she does it, or?
No, I mean, it is a state law, so I, so that's her.
Basically, this is just me being transparent, what I'm doing.
Right, yeah, yeah, if I'm, if I'm understanding it correctly, you didn't even have to come before us, because it's a state law, kind of, sort of.
Right, yeah, I'm just letting y'all know what I'm doing.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for that, too.
So, do we need to do anything?
Or you should approve the motion to, to make up the resolution?
Do I need to read that?
No, you don't need to read it.
All right, so I need a motion to approve this resolution.
I make a motion?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Disaster and Recovery and Redevelopment Plan.
Um, we, Debbie, we kind of finished up our disaster and recovery plan. Um, it's that big book right there, so we, we just need to get the chairman to, and the vice chairman, both, chairman and vice chairman, to sign off on it.
All right, so we, so we need a motion to sign this plan, Redevelopment Plan? Need a motion?
I'll make a motion?
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Chief of the Senator?
Uh, it's, it's running normal. We are having the, um, that shelter put on there tomorrow to kind of offset some of that sun that's beating down on that LCD wood. Other than that, uh, it's, it's down a little bit because the school has not, you know, had, they hadn't been fixed back up, so, that's running.
All right, Road Department, you got anything?
I had a couple quotes in there for a box blade, I think.
Yeah.
I was thinking that we might have turned it in.
So, I got them right here, so y'all can look at them.
He ain't give us nothing.
Well, I don't know if I got it in time, did I? I know I got it, but I want y'all to see the, uh, Mr. Keith, kind of, he, um, he used that mower max running. He can tell you a little bit about it.
I got those three quotes here. The mower max. And then, the box blade, first, there, look at that.
Maybe looking, I think you're looking at three quotes, um. Those three different booms is what that is, one's a twenty-two foot, one's a twenty-four, one's a twenty-six. And everybody I talked to was, you know, you pretty much, if you gonna cut highways and you gonna cut dirt roads, probably wanna go with the twenty-four, the one in the middle, because you don't wanna be too long on dirt roads, and you don't wanna be too short on highways. You know, that's kind of what they was recommending.
Tell them about your box, maybe what you needed for it.
To replace the one we got now, it's pretty much in bad shape, you know, we done welded it back together numerous of times, but it's just, I get, we're so unlevelled that it just don't work good when we trying to level roads with it.
That's a twelve foot, what that is?
Yeah, that's all we can pull.
The whole machine, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, and there's a attachment that goes on the front, you can get different ones, but like we are, we use, if we go out there right after a rain.
You're hoping so for that quote.
And it makes tracks in the road, we use the blade that's on the ones we got to kind of level the tracks back out.
And this is in addition to your fleet now, or you gonna get rid of one?
That'll be up to y'all, well, like a little excavator, a little excavator could be used for either one, you know, right now, we shorted it, but.
Or trade it in.
At, at times.
The excavator one's the one that's kind of slow, right?
Yeah.
That's the one the public's complaining about.
Yeah.
I mean, we could really use to keep, we done paid on it three years, I guess, you know, but it's still up to y'all, but. Mr. Keith came and looked at that one when it was running, and one of our operators came and ran it, and he took to it, you know, well, and the machine does, I think the machine does what it's supposed to do, and I know me and Mr. Keith talked, and both of us has talked to a lot of people about the machine. I know Jell's been around one, probably.
Seminole County's got one, Early County's got one, and I think Decatur's got two, I think.
I think Early County's got two, and Decatur County's got two.
Bunch of counties around.
I won't think about the other.
Nobody's talked to me about any major issues with the machine. And when we demoed that one, they was represented from the state of Alabama. And he said they had ninety-five of them, and he said that they hadn't had any major issue, you know, all of them have some little minor something, but.
The one thing the guy from the state of Alabama told me is if you gonna mow, mow, mow trees with it, don't get an extendable boom.
Yeah.
You want to keep your boom as short as possible, extendable boom, when you're cutting trees, it's gonna bounce and break and fracture. Said that they've got extendable booms, they use them, it's, it was the Alabama DOT, the guy was talking. He said they get it for guardrails and more, the banks on the backside of guardrails with extendable booms. He said anything they mow trees and brush with.
Heavy duty stuff.
You don't want, you don't want that, and it, and it was, it was impressive, what it, what it would do. Um, it was quite, it, that, the cutting head on it, is like a mower, like the, the Alamo one that we have now, but it was a bigger, it's, I think, the one we got's a four or five foot, it's like a six foot. So, you should go faster, and, and, um, the DOT guy told me that like on this one, if you mess around and get too close to a ditch and fall off in it, like you do lots of times, that you can actually turn these four wheels the same way and just.
Walk out?
And just crawl out the dang, and it, and it's, it's articulate, it, it's like some trucks do. If you gonna turn to the right, the front tires turn to the right, and back tires turn the opposite way.
Make it turn shorter.
Turn around shorter and all, it's, it, it, it looked impressive, to be honest, and it should for what the quote is on it. I think, didn't you say that that's close to what the tractor plus the Alamo?
Yeah, it was with John Jared Allen, same.
They're pretty much same price. I think what impressed me and Mr. Keith both the most was, it looks long, but as he was talking about, the way that, that thing, it just turned around right into, I mean, it just turned around, I mean, it didn't, you didn't have to pull up, back up. That thing just, he just walked it right around, headed the other way. It, pretty impressive machine, you know, I mean, it's got a lot of good features to it, and I'm like Mr. Keith, I think it'll speed up the process.
Well, my thoughts are, I'm okay with the box blade, I would like to wa, wait till we do the budget, and see what kind of money we can get for the excavator machine, and then we'll talk about that.
I still gotta get finance, and anyway, I'm waiting, I'm gonna be calling, I got finance.
It's fine, I mean, we running what we got, and we've been doing good with what we got. Um, I don't know if I told y'all or not, but I know Mr. Keith has asked about it. Um, what I'm looking at, from the time we got the Alamo, we kind of put them cutting, you know, a streak, instead of doing the jumping around, we cut from, like on this side of the county, we cut from Cooktown over to Baker County line. We cut every dirt road in that, in that street, we did the same thing on the other side of the county. And we, then we moved over to another district, then we caught the two middle sections. With us doing it that way, we don't get as many complaints, because when we cut this road, you don't cut none, and somebody said, "Well, you should've cut mine while you was here," whatever. So, we was cutting streets, we made a lot better time, and by December, if we keep going at the rate we are now, it'll be a two-year, about a two-year pattern. You know, we, it's took us about two years to cut all the roads, and we working on getting some of the highway, you know, we'll have highways and all cut. I think the second, you know, we fixing to start over, once we cut Phillipsburg, we'll be starting over on this side. But I think it's gonna go a little faster, because some of the roads had, you know, had grown back as much, so we can keep them on a pattern as much as possible, I know we get calls, you got to put out fires, but it's worked really well trying to cut them, and then you know right where, where to go back and start, you know, start over. Getting them on a, getting them on a pattern has really helped us out and make better time, instead of just moving all over the county, but the, this trip is gonna take us about two years, I think we'll be a little bit quicker the second go round. And if we look at getting another machine, I think it'll.
Well, I'm not saying that Rico doesn't do a good job with it, I'm just saying that he does excellent job, but it's just.
Yeah.
Like I passed him today, and like, he had to stop, he had to get out the way, and then move his stuff out the way, and I passed him, and he waved, and then he gets over there, and he has to move it back over there, but the other thing, just kind of.
At the time, you know, and we've talked about this some, you know, you, when you add on, y'all know about adding on some, it needs to be in a cycle to be traded, you know, because you go to having problems. We start to have deval problems, you know, on the Alamo. It's something you need to put on a, I'd say, a three-year cycle, you know, to move it. When we got that one, we was just having so much problem with, you know, being broke down for three months, you know, that we wasn't making any time, and.
But it's been running good for the last six months, though, hasn't it?
Yeah, 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 everything's been kind of, you know, I mean, we have our problems, but we hadn't been down any length of time with either one of them, they, they both have a few little minor issues, but you know, I think we need to look at, you know, kind of when we wanna move things, you know, instead of trying to run it till it just falls apart.
Right.
If we wanna keep moving faster.
We'll look at it during the budget session, if they'll be glad to.
What would be your projection on the, of a schedule with this machine?
What was that?
What's your projection of a schedule with this machine versus the two-year program you was talking about?
Oh.
That guy from the DOT, the, now, this is the Alabama DOT, you know, it's a whole different ballgame than Miller County. Uh, they're on a three-year, what they do.
Yeah.
They trade theirs every three years.
How many hours, how many hours they put on each?
Well, I think it'll speed it up to, um, and, and if we, if we keeping them cut, like, with, even with the two years, I know that sounds like a lot, but it's a lot better than, to be honest, I've been here eighteen years, and I don't think we've cut every road in the county, and we getting mighty close to being cut every road in the county, but we, we put them on a, a rotation cycle, you know, we got a little better plan of what we're doing, instead of just jumping around, and it's made a big difference in what we're getting done by not moving all the time. Um, I believe that if we went with this machine and had a faster one on the other side of the county, I'd say we probably could do it in a little over a year, or, you know, might cut it down to a year, and that's, that's the kind of the goal I was always at, is be able to cut them all in a year.
Do you remember how much we paid for that excavator machine? Do you remember the buyout part figure?
I, I didn't do it, somebody else bought it.
What I was saying, in two years, it's almost about grown, and then you back to square one.
Yeah, yeah, what's helped us is, is we've kept the little sidearm mower running. And it, like, he's, he's back over where we gonna start back with the machine, once he gets the highway cut. And he's cutting the weeds, well, then the limb cutter don't have to cut the weeds, he's, he's cutting the trees. But it's, it's mighty old too, me and Doug talked about that today, there's a lot of them used out there on the internet that's bringing three, four thousand dollars, and the one we got's, is eighteen years old. You know, and that is really, I, Mr. Keith, I know, seemed to look, which y'all probably have too. When you mow them weeds, that's a lot of road that the limb cutter doesn't have to cut. And if we could just keep that machine running, but, you know, the old iron on it's getting rotten, I welded on it this morning, a half a day, but he's back running. But it's something that is not that expensive, and it does a lot of good, and, you know, if y'all would be interested, we could kind of look maybe for a good used one on the internet, and, you know, try to get us another one of them, you know, to help keep it running.
You're talking about a boom mower for the tractor?
No, it, well, it's, you, it's, it's a, really, it's a ditch cutter. Um, it's, they, it hooks at a three-point hitch, it's got a mowing deck on it, and it'll, when you pick your lift up, it'll mow a little over your head when you hold your deck up. But it just goes along and mows the weeds, and then when the limb cutter comes to mow that road, all he's gotta do is mow the trees. You know, instead of trying to mow the road and having to mow the weeds and all that, it's already done. And it really works well and makes everything move faster with that, kind of running ahead of. Kind of running ahead of them, and he can move fast enough. That what I've been doing is I let him cut over here and then, you know, move to the other side of the county and cut my section. But the old machine's getting old.
It kind of looks like a, a back wing mower with just one section, it's, it's offset to the, to the right side and it, and it'll pick up and down and. Like I say, mo- mowers the, the ditch part that encroaches into your road. He, he mows that down where the guy with limb cutter comes by, just.
He can, he can ride along and, you know, ba- basically mow right up to somebody's fence and everything that the weeds is growing on the side of the road.
Doug, can you get us some prices on them or some pictures or something? All right, Sheriff, you got anything? Good. Whitney, you done?
Yes, I'm done for now.
What about you, you got anything over there? I, I say something sitting out there, you don't want to talk about it, I mean it's.
Well, we, it's running out well, I think, we still have some radio work to do and generator problems with air conditioning.
Writing articles for the newspaper.
When we get air conditioning, we'll talk about it.
Okay. All right. I've been told that we need to go into executive session for two things. You want to do real estate or personnel first?
Whichever you choose first.
Let's do real estate first. Who you want, who you need in there for that?
Uh, Kevin Cowan in Virginia.
Miss Virginia, uh, come on guys. Motion to go into executive session.
I make a motion.
Second.
You have anything you'd like to add tonight?
Yes, sir.
You got nothing? Nothing?
Please just don't have any questions.
You ain't sick, are you?
Yes, sir.
All right. There's no more anything need to be discussed? I need a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.